Make the motion to keep them on here for discussion. We can always simply discuss them at the workshop if you choose.
I'll be honest with you. We talked about tax exemption, city and where our authority to.
Yes.
I really think that a opportunity workshop with the county.
Yes.
Which this will be. Take the press what's over anything that I like them to say here tonight. So I will move the toes. If we move those, be moved to the workshop very soon. Remove from the agenda along with the way I took. And they don't like to discuss.
That sounds great.
I actually think that all these things, all this stuff, momentum results many. I think all that should be a workshop too.
Yeah, it is. We're going to put all that on the workshop and we're going to allow her tonight to brief the other. Since she came up here for the meeting, she has, she's just going to briefly give the council an update on what's going on. Because I know she's had the opportunity to meet with you on the restations. And Christie wants possibly, but the rest of us, we've not really, we don't really have a clue what's going on. So we'd like to know what's going on with these suggested work areas. So we'll, I think we'll just keep those on there. And then of course we'll have public comments. So is there a motion?
I made the motion, we have a second.
Okay, I'll second. Everyone, let's do a roll call vote, Christie.
Yes.
Okay, Angie.
Yes.
And Dr. Weller. Okay. So let me go ahead and tell you that the first one, what we're going to do under action, action item A, this is an ordinance to fix the compensation for the chief judge of municipal court. We had our first reading last month, so we'll have the second reading this month. Are there any questions before moving forward to vote? Okay, now, hey, do we have a motion?
I move that we will send VR two zero five two dash four in ordinance to fix the compensation for the chief judge for municipal court in the city of Blue Ridge and for other purposes.
Okay, serious debate?
I'll second.
Okay, let's do a roll call vote, Dr. Wayley.
Yes.
Angie.
Yes.
And Christie.
Yes.
Okay. The next ordinance is for solid waste. This one was added, according to our current ordinance in place, we are going to have, we'll have a public hearing. And what we're planning to do on that is we'll have a meeting on, for our workshop, we're going to incorporate a public hearing for the solid waste. We will also have a public hearing for the second reading. So that gives people two more opportunities before we have it. So I know there are several of you in the audience tonight who represent businesses with dealing with the waste. So I hope that's satisfactory to everyone that we'll be able to do that at the workshop on the thirty first. And we'll get everyone in time and make sure that we send official letters out to the other carriers as well. So this first reading though is just a general, in fact, I'll let our attorney go over it just a bit to give you a general idea of what we're thinking about doing.
Info, does he?
As this is drafted and if it is approved, it would basically make three changes to the solid waste ordinance. Currently, there's a numeric limit on the number of solid waste providers in the city. This would remove the numeric limit. So that's the first change. It would, as a housekeeping matter, remove references to the city administrator, since we don't currently have a city administrator. And then it adds three new requirements. It says that, again, if adopted, collections may appear Monday through Friday, not prior to seven AM or after five PM. That trucks and vehicles used in collections must be DFP certified. And that trucks and other vehicles used in the collection of garbage from residential premises may not exceed one at one half times. And that's basically it. It removes the numeric limitation on the number of permits, takes out the references to the city administrator and adds those three new requirements.
And again, this is just the first reading, so we will not be voting on this tonight. But if you want to get a copy of it, please contact City Hall. You can contact our city clerk, Assistant City Clerk, Mary Ann, or anyone in the front office. And it should be online as well. And that way you can read through it and be ready for a public hearing, which will be on the thirty first. Okay? Any questions from the council? Okay, the next, the next item is ETC franchise agreement. I received a, I received correspondence from them and they had sent, actually in the form of an ordinance. And I don't believe we've ever done their franchise agreement as an ordinance. So I think if we just do it with this agreement, that should be sufficient, shouldn't it?
Yeah, it was unusual for me to see this proposed in the form of an ordinance. Usually you just have a franchise agreement with someone. And we actually have an ordinance that talks about what franchise agreements must contain and those kinds of things. So I think the proper way to address this is probably to just do a franchise agreement with ETC. And we could even present that at the workshop session.
Okay. So you'll work on preparing now? Okay, so at this point, we will not, we're not going to do an ordinance form of this cap and prepare the agreement. So good for everybody? The outsourcing, I'm not sure exactly if it was Jack and he is not here tonight. But we're trying to, do you have that information? So we've been talking about HR, our human resources, outsourcing that. Do you have the information or you guys?
I'm going to move hiring a HR person. Instead of hiring.
Hello, is this working?
Instead of hiring a HR person, we had talked about, I think Angie maybe brought it up, us talking to ADP, seeing if they could help with some of the responsibilities. Payroll is already done by ADP. Becky and Barbie gets it all together and they send it in. And then it's actually processed, the checks are done and everything, you know, from them by outsourcing. We looked at doing, like this, this plan would have a designated HR specialist. It would also handle our reporting that we have to do, our INIs, all awarding of new people. And then open enrollment would actually be online through them. And I know that's a little stressful because we've never had our employees do it online, you know, on our own. It's usually one person sitting back there trying to key it in and we could make so many mistakes. So I told them what we would do. I went with the, when I worked at the school system, we went through open enrollment. And we had bus drivers and, you know, anywhere from bus drivers to principals. And we sit with them at least the first year or two and say, okay, we have computers up here. Y'all are welcome to come over here if you don't feel comfortable doing it yourself. So don't think, you know, that that deter you. But the price I gave us was five thousand, five hundred and eighty-two dollars to do all that outsourcing.
Is that per year or just?
Yes.
Do they handle also anything dealing with employees, matters, all matters that HR would handle? Do they handle all of that?
No, they do. I mean, they have a specialist that will help us, help us look through the walls. And then we also have Chuck, of course. But they don't do any evaluations or anything like that. But they will have, they have sources that we can use for that.
So were you guys ready to bet on that?
They would not, they would not handle harassment or workplace issues like HR would do in North Shore Cancer Center. That would.
Where would that part would be in-house. And do we check, do you know if we do, does any of that come through GMA or anything?
It can, it just depends on the night through the claims and that kind of thing.
I have chaired so many fair hearings in my day that I feel like I should do a greeting. And I believe that it is very important in organization, in a city like this, that we have some established, clear-cut, comprehensive, well-thought-out steps that employees can take, completely anonymous, to know that their concerns are being heard by somebody who knows what they're doing. And that, I don't think we have that in place.
And they would help get us, they would help with us getting file on that, the HR specialist.
The fact that they may have somebody that they consult with is one thing. I, I, twelve thousand dollars, I don't know if I can fit somebody up if you what they're going to do. But I don't want us to feel like this is comprehensive HR. Here it is, here's comprehensive HR. I wouldn't call it comprehensive HR. I'd say you got, you got comprehensive help with filling out insurance and roll forms and, you know, getting everybody getting a W two or something. This is not human resources. And it's presented as a human resource fix-all. That definitely is not. I'm not the least bit, but then it gives them ten to twelve thousand dollars to assist the process. But I don't want us to be lulled into believing that that's human resources. And I know for a fact, we don't have processes perceived for our employees at the moment that feel comfortable without calling money a hundred and so and so. And talking to somebody that they need that, they deserve that. And that's part of comprehensive employment, in my opinion. I'm sure Joe, I didn't have, I haven't thought of an argument. Were you arguing?
No.
I think you were.
We will have to have a designated person in-house. So one of us will have to bring.
I don't believe that our structure, I don't believe that our structure, nor our employee base and their bag of skills allows anybody that's in-house to have that role, to be honest. In organizations that I've been in before, you have a very well-trained, agreed, long-time-experienced person in HR. And that person is, cannot be compromised. Their confidentiality is beyond question. Their reputation is beyond question. And we don't have anybody in-house that needs that, in my opinion. So I believe that it's a hole we have that at the moment probably needs to be fixed. And how we go about fixing it, like we'll, you know, I'm going to lose the end of the period. We'll go into executive session. We can discuss this or all the other things. But this is serious as a train wreck in my opinion. This is, what we're getting is not comprehensive HR. It's called comprehensive HR. And I don't want to publicly turn anybody else away, but it is comprehensive HR.
So what's one to discuss?
They're a huge company, so.
Honestly.
Yeah, I think that she, he's talking more, like you said, the comprehensive, the entire.
The whole thing?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's just the plan.
That's just the plan that I'll bring up for the year.
Which I do think this is a great program. You know, I do, so like this could be a good program. I know when Joe was working as city clerk and doing HR, it took him countless hours just, you know, doing everything for the insurance and all that. So that's a very tedious, time-consuming and could easily make mistakes with that. But I also agree, I think you've got to have the whole comprehensive plan. So it's got to be, it's got to be a two-part system. My opinion, so I think that is something we can discuss in executive, as far as personnel. So let's go ahead and we'll table this item until our next meeting at least, or we can bet on it after. Do we need to take it, do you think?
I'm happy to, I'm happy to pick up this twelve thousand five hundred dollars if you're, if y'all believe that you need it. I just don't want us to believe that we are getting comprehensive human resources for that price and that what we're getting is quite a half a lot.
And I believe, I believe we'll be able to bet on this after executive session, so. So we move it down to that with personnel.
I believe that after the, during the executive session session.
That sounds good. Okay, the next item, quotes for the, of course, we tabled the ladder truck. And I did speak with Commissioner Chairman Hensley earlier and he plans to come to the meeting with us on the thirty first to discuss that. So and probably I would thank Chief Thomas as well. The next item, quotes for the trucks, for the park department. Last month, we, they, we decided we would purchase a truck. We just didn't have quotes, so we now have two quotes. Christie, do you have any things that you're under the park department that you'd like to say about these quotes? Or do you know which one they prefer?
I think we're going to go with the lowest one. I know that it was going to be a building and he thought there would be more use out of it. Because I think right now, we have one truck that is a trash truck, seven days a week. And it's a four-cylinder, so then to put all the lawn mower, put that up to it and everything else, the truck that we'll be looking at is a V eight full-size and four doors open. And they go way out to some of the places to mow. And so it should be easier and like, you know, all right together if you're not taking two, one to be near and everything else. I know that I think the last truck, they, he spent, the older truck, he's already spent six K in just repairs for it. So.
So all these two quotes, though, what they just said, one forty-nine thousand, one forty-seven? And I can't really tell. Which one are they wanting, forty-seven or forty-nine?
I'm going to say, I think the four, does it say where they're from? Because the, because the forty-nine is.
I mean, do they have a demand?
Yeah, I think he wants to say where Chevrolet is.
The Chevrolet, yeah, yeah.
Well, let's go with you, I think we actually need to ensure that department.
Well, we need to do the budget going out too. Because it's not just about the trucks.
So we normally do, we amend our budgets out at one time. And I don't know that we're ready to do a budget amendment.
Okay. What I would recommend is going to approve the, for, 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 for.
We do that at a later time?
Yes.
Yeah, that's.
To make the motion to approve for buying the truck from where to away?
Okay, there's our motion to have a second.
I'll second.
Okay, let's do a roll call vote, Dr. Wayley. Angie.
Yes.
And Christie.
Yes.
Okay, so you can let him know tomorrow that we, okay. So the next item, items under six will be, we're going to talk about permits. And I'm not sure if we put that on.
Dr. Wayley.
Dr. Wayley, okay. Did you want permits on the discussion items?
Yes, but we've got that solved.
Okay, so we'll just say we've got that solved. The election is solved, now to do that. Tax exemptions for citizens, that's something we talked about last month when we opted out of the House bill, five eighty-one. We want to do some tax exemptions for our citizens. Did you put the, that in here, the, I am a senior? I have some suggestions and of course, we're going to talk about this more at the workshop. But I did come up with some suggestions, things that we might be able to do. You know, one that we can do, could be, would it be the property tax relief? And this would include, it says many citizens, or cities offer tax exemptions, deferrals or default programs for senior citizens who own their homes. This would of course not apply to any commercial properties, but it would be for senior citizens who own their own homes, not renting, and they're paying no property taxes. We just have to figure out a way to make that work with, you know, age. I think you go by maybe age brackets where, you know, maybe, and I'm thinking when they get over eighty-five, you don't have to pay any city taxes. That's my opinion, because I think that would be a wonderful thing. Because there are so many people who are on fixed budgets. And you have to remember, the citizens in the city are double taxed. We pay county taxes and we pay city taxes. So we're, we are double taxed. And if you're on a fixed income, that can be very, very difficult. I've gotten numerous calls from senior citizens who, it's a struggle. And especially the way our property taxes have increased. Mine have gone up three times the amount, just from my house downtown. And it was, I mean, it's gone up into the thousands of dollars now. And the property values have increased so much, that's one. So since we opted out of the House bill, we figured this is a way if we can get some, some deferral programs in place, that that would help. There were some other ideas, which these are going to be kind of complicated, but like even sales tax exemptions. A lot of cities do that. They do senior tax freeze programs in some cities. They have programs that freeze property taxes for eligible seniors, preventing any sort of tax increase, which is exactly what the House bill would have done. It would have only allowed a three percent tax increase. So that would be something that we could do with property values. So say, okay, if you're over a certain age, you know, this is, you could only go up in the percentage of three percent, maybe what the House bill proposed. And then of course, we could also offer some homestead exemptions like the county. Right now, the city only offers one, it's my understanding, and that is just for the veterans program, which is required. So I think if, you know, we put our heads together, come up with some ideas, how to implement them. But this is something that will be very beneficial to our, to our citizens. So any comments? Okay, we'll just be thinking about that. And again, that's going to be incorporated into our thirty, the meeting on the thirty first. Okay, the next item will be the Fenton County MOU, which we're going to discuss that more at the, at the thirty first meeting. And at that point, we're going to have Becky, who is of our water department, sewer department. She's going to run numbers that will show us the benefits of the proposed MOU. We'll discuss it more at that time as well. And I spoke with Anita Weaver, actually emailed, and she said she would come to that meeting and then the next meeting where we vote. So we can ask her questions if needed. Okay? So Mandy, at this time, we're going to let you get up and give a rundown of what you've been doing and let the council answer any questions.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you all. It has been almost a year now that we have been working together. And so I appreciate that opportunity to come back. I've been on site with you all several times over the last year and had a number of conferences, one-on-one or in small groups. This is the first time we've come back together as a full group. So what I wanted to do tonight, Mayor, if I may, is just bring everyone together to talk about what we have accomplished in the last few months. to, to talk about what we have accomplished in the last few months, um, some tasks that have been completed and turned over to you all for consideration, as well as two current tasks that are underway that you all approved, I think in your February meeting, it's been researched. And then a couple of tasks that in recent conversations with various council members, I have been asked to brief you on whether you'd like to consider moving forward with those or not. Okay, so that's sort of what we're gonna do tonight. Mary, uh, Mary, you're giving, uh, Council, you a copy of what's on the screen. And I think she's driving the presentation for me, so thank you, you're a clicker. So go go for it. So the contract, uh, that you all have, a standing agreement with me and my company, is to perform zoning administrator tasks for you to help with permitting and licensing, as well as land use analysis for any cases that have to come before the city council for determination. So annexation, rezonement, terraces, things of that nature. For up to, um, 40 hours per month. And I have been asked as part of that to do as much staff training as possible with the goal that more and more of the everyday permit reviews and licensing reviews be able to be conducted in-house. And so over the last several months, um, I'm spending anywhere between 14 and 40 hours a month on those services for you all. Um, I did prepare, at your request, a complete standard operating procedure for how to review, particularly building permits, um, as well as alcohol licensing and occupational tax certificates, which we commonly think of as business licenses. And I actually came in the summer and spent a couple of days on-site and staff that we had at that point in time, training through that SOP, uh, which is really here to put more structure to that process and create a one-stop shop for all things that applicants may need. And also importantly, I think, to, uh, create standard review times. I think one of the confusion, confusing parts that I experienced when I first started working with you all was no one knew when to expect an answer. And so now we've developed a standard turnaround time. If it's this type of permit application, you can expect an answer at 48 business hours. Or if it's this type, it may be 10, 10 business days. But for every, everything that we do, we've created that. Uh, we also have some confusion because the ordinance that was on the website for the city was outdated. We've updated that, as well as updated the, uh, ordinances that are published on meeting code. Uh, we wanted to make sure that everyone had proper notice of that. Updated the zoning map, and also made the zoning layer publicly viewable on Q public, which you all may know as the Tax Assistance Map. So, uh, at the time that I started, we really were not able to even discern what was the most current ordinance or what was the zoning district or a piece of parcel. Um, and the public couldn't see that. So we've taken care of all of that now, and that's where things should be, we're worried a lot about that.
Mandy, let me say one thing for everyone listening. That is not still 100% accurate, so we still do need for people to contact the City Hall to make sure. If you're buying a piece of property, you're selling, make sure that you contact City Hall first. And I'm working on getting, hopefully getting that fixed.
Okay, so I'll, I'll comment on those two things, Mayor, while, and I'll jump ahead a little bit. One of the services that we're offering is zoning certification letter. And so that, we've actually, I'll show you an, an application for that, just a few moments. A zoning certification letter is, if you just wanna know because you're curious and you're a baby kick of the tires on a piece of property, call us, email us, and we'll tell you, hey, this piece of property is zoned, C2, R3, whatever it may be. But if you need something more formal than that, say maybe for a loan application, a real estate closing, or a due diligence period, uh, certainly those can apply for a zoning certification letter. And that's where we will actually do the deep dive of the research and certify, you know, on city letterhead, as zoning officials, that this, these are the zoning regulations that apply to a piece of property. Um, and then, you know, that takes a couple of days. One of the things that's important for that, though, is that we have a master filing system. Uh, that really should be parcel-based, so that it holds all the current permitting and licensing activity on a piece of property, but also the historical data. So go back to that zoning certification, say if council zoned a piece of property, but put certain conditions on it, we need to be able to know that so that we can reflect that in zoning certifications and permit reviews and licensing reviews we do for everyone. So we're, um, we're, we're trying to establish that now. And as you all know, there's been a, a lot of turnover in that office. So some of these action items are a little bit repetitive as we start over, um, with, with each new version. Uh, but we're gonna, we're gonna keep at it, uh, until that happens. And we're also looking at how to structure that filing system, um, both electronically and in hard, uh, paper form by that parcel level. We're having some discussions with that. Um, the next item I'm gonna go into at this point, that I have been asked to review your ordinances to make you aware of some things or in the ordinance that you may not be aware of, or you may not have anticipated the consequences of those regulations, good or bad. And so I have a list of those ready for, uh, for you all when we, when we do have a workshop, if you can get going. Just wanna give you an example, uh, and you can go quickly through these, where we were getting, stop right there if you would please. We were getting, um, if I got a site plan or any kind of planning document at all when I was first receiving permits, uh, or applications for permits, they were, you know, very, um, amateurish. They were kind of on the, you know, the back of the paper napkin sort of thing. And soon with the great pains, uh, that culminated in August of 2023, which is prior to my case with you, to really review your zoning ordinance and your land development code. And, and it's in my bag over there, your land development code is about this thick. So obviously, you know, something that's on the back of the napkin is not going to consider all of the regulations that you have put into place to protect Blue Ridge and what you think is in the best interest of Blue Ridge's development. So we really tried to work with folks to make sure that we got the adequate, uh, site plans, building plans that we needed. So I just wanted to give you an example. This is a type of, of plan that we're getting now, and I am getting more calls. There's definitely an uptick in both the volume of permitting applications, but also an uptick in the, in the volume of calls that we're receiving where folks are interested in writing development to Blue Ridge. And so having something that's well thought out and well designed is really important. So that's an example of something we're working with now. Uh, this one also, this, this plan set is 16 pages long. So, you know, obviously, they've taken the time, it might not be fully compliant, but at least that they have submitted something that is fully thought out. They, they visited your regulations, they found them on meeting code. And they're providing something for us that we can actually, you know, thoroughly review and make sure that it is meeting with your vision and your regulatory environment. The next one is an example of something we're offering now, um, that we received. I got this a week or two ago. We're now offering something called Planning Team Services, where every other week, uh, I join your staff and your other consultants that have anything to do with land use, building permitting, and licensing. And we offer pre-application meetings to folks who are interested in permitting in Blue Ridge. And we ask them, we have a reservation form now, where they fill out the form, they submit it to us, they tell us, uh, the property that they're interested in developing, your ideas for the piece of property. And we have them submit to us illustrations, concepts, preliminary plans. They, uh, want to kind of test drive. And this is a pre-application meeting, and this is where we come together and we are able to hear their proposal and then give them feedback. Hey, you're gonna have this challenge. This piece of property is not zoned for that particular use, or you're, need a variance for such and such, or that's not in line with the council's vision for land use of the city. Whatever that may be, we're able to, to talk with them about that at that pre-application stage, so that we're guiding them in the direction that the council wants to see development go prior to them fully completing designs, engaging the time and the money to do so, even before they're applying for anything. Whether that's if they're applying for something that we, at the administrative level, we're gonna look at, or before it gets to you, uh, for any kind of judgment, we've been able to work through, hopefully, um, you know, any, any issues that need to be addressed. We're also able at that time to really talk to people about what the proper processes are. Um, so we've had a lot of success with that. Um, that's just an example of the zoning certification we were talking about earlier. Um, that application is one that has been developed for you. If you'll keep going, there is something right there. Uh, that is, what you're looking at there, the next slide also is a land use activity calendar. You have two of them now. That was developed for you back in the fall. It carries you all the way through the 2025 calendar year. And what that does is that is every task that someone on the staff or the consultants or viewers of, of labor body must engage in under Georgia law or city law anytime a land use case comes before council for decision. So an annexation, a rezone, a conditional use, a variance, a special exception, anything like that. Both Georgia law and city code have due process rights built in for both the applicant but also for the public. So the public has an opportunity to be notified that the piece of property is under consideration for some sort of request of the council. And your ordinance requires, uh, letters to be sent from City Hall to adjacent property owners so far in advance of that public hearing. The ordinance and state law requires public hearing. State law requires notification on, on the property itself, as well as in the newspaper. The newspaper only goes weekly, so we have deadlines to comply with there. So what this does is it steps out every, every piece of the process that has to be taken along with the timeline, the due date, and the rule, either at the state level or the local level that applies, so that whether it's you all or myself or the staff or applicant who wishes to put something in front of you, they now have an application deadline, and they know in advance what hearing day is going to be, you know, as do you. And included in that is, um, uh, that here is that our planning team, so that we prevent those applications timely, and we have them well enough in advance that we can actually take a look at them before they're coming to you. And then early on, we were kind of scrambling to get some things together to get to you, and then you all would have questions that maybe we weren't prepared to answer. This timeline can take that into consideration, should be able to, to handle that. Um, so some of your cases go to planning boards, some do not under the ordinance, so you have an activity calendar for, for both sets of cases, okay? Um, along the way, we also realized that our applications were really not serving our applicants and our public well, and that we're not serving our staff well. So what was happening was people were in good faith filling out the application form that we gave them. They were turning that in, and then they rightly expected an answer, approved, denied, whatever that happened to be. But because the application forms themselves were incomplete and did not ask for all of the information that our land development code had asked for, we were not able to give them an approved or denied, and certainly not able to do so timely. Instead, it became an exaggerated exchange of information. Hey, you know, Ms. Smith, would you please send me these four things? Oh, now we have these four things, and we realize we need, you know, five more. So to cut down on that, uh, Council, you asked me to revise your applications and also to provide application forms for you where they were missing. So again, your, your code is this thick. It requires a number of different applications. Um, one project, they have, you know, a dozen application forms attached to it. So we have produced those for you. There's an example, I think that's a building permitting on the right-hand side. The list on the left is so far, we have developed 18 revised application forms for you. Um, each of those application forms can be filled out in pen. They can be filled out online in a PDF form. They can be submitted electronically to you or to our staff. And any attachments can be uploaded along with that plan schedule. And that didn't cost you, we're using, um, software packages that you already have, email packages that you already have, so we didn't have to buy anything to do that. The application forms are also designed to act as a checklist. If someone takes that application and they work down the list and they answer every question on it, that's their checklist. At the bottom of every form, it simply says required submissions. And it lists everything that our land development code says must be provided for us to analyze that application. So again, an applicant, whether it's for a building permit or something that does come to you for judgment, or maybe, uh, someone says, you know, maybe I disagree with the decision that was made on the building permit application. I'd like to fill that decision with city council. There's a form for that now, where there wasn't one before. The form is the checklist, it has the list of items that have to be submitted with it. Um, and there'll be, we're hoping that those are gonna be available on the city's website soon, but those have been turned in to you. We do have a few more, uh, to finish up. We have not finished applications for the occupational tax certificate, alcohol, special event, administrative variance, or sign, but those will be coming to you in the next few weeks. We also didn't have, um, permit cards that were eas- easily recognizable, particularly from, uh, the street. And so what, these are examples of permit cards that have been developed. One, uh, that's a land development permit and a building permit, and here you're on the next page, two more. And, um, so what these have are the legally required information for the various types of permits. After when a, so when an application comes in, we have one of two choices. It's, you know, it's approved or denied. Um, it can be, you know, please be asked for revisions, or it can be approved with conditions. So here we have a, a way to spell that out on the cards. And then, um, everyone's on notice, including the public. If something has gone through the review process, if it's compliant or not, it would have a card, uh, there are these colors and are easily recognizable. We have one more card to make for you, and that's the signed permit, and that'll be coming to you in the next few weeks. Um, we already talked about the senior operating procedures, uh, but I'll revisit that. That was something that you tasked me with. And so there is, uh, a full senior operating procedure for how to review building permits, uh, and all things associated with building permits. So that may be preliminary flat applications, major and minor subdivision flats, small flats, land development permits, uh, anything that could, could be considered necessary for going through, uh, moving dirt and turning a building into. We actually came on site, like I said, in July, um, and trained on that. And then everyone has copies of that material. You also asked me to, uh, provide zoning training for the city council. So what is the city council's role, what's the public's role, the property owner, the staff, the consultants? Anytime something has to come before you all for a vote, again, they rezonement, variance, and special conditions. Um, you have guided both through state law, local law, and as practices. And so that, that, uh, particular training has been put together for you. It has been ready, I think, since the early fall. And unfortunately, we have not come together to actually host and conduct that training, uh, as of yet. But you asked me to prepare, it's prepared, we're, we're ready to go. Uh, you also asked me to look at the fee schedule for the city. And so this was, uh, done and completed and delivered to you back, uh, last October. So building permitting, land development, licensing, anything that's associated with those services are services that are being uniquely provided for that particular applicant. And that's different than those services that are generally available to our taxpayers because they reside in our city, like a police service or a public work service. And so those services that are in exchange for a unique service provided really ought to be fee days. And by having them fee days, then those services are not being taxed, you know, not being subsidized by the taxpayers through their property taxes. Because the more we collect the fees for those individual services, the less that those services are being supported by the taxpayer. So I did a complete analysis of your fee schedule for building permitting, licensing, land development, all of those sorts of things. What you see on the left is just the cover page, uh, the PowerPoint that I prepared for discussion points, uh, when council is ready to workshop that. The discussion points are there. And then on the right, you see just a snapshot of the cover page, uh, the draft fee schedule that has been, uh, provided for discussion as well as the current. So that shows the current fees, if you have them, and the proposed fees. A couple of things I do want to bring to your attention where fees are concerned. Um, number one is the law, Georgia law changed in July 2024 governing how we can assess what we call regulatory fees, which is what licensing and permitting falls under. And particularly how we have to calculate building permit fees. I would encourage council to look at that sooner rather than later, to make sure that our building permit fee methodology is compliant with that change. Um, a number, I also want council to think about, we'll workshop this, asking for certain administrative fees to be paid in advance, meaning when an application is submitted. It's been practiced at most localities to not require fee payment until a permit or a license has been reviewed and issued. The problem with that is that sometimes people change their mind. Sometimes the deal falls through. You know, I have sitting in my email just this week, um, an applicant for you all who said, please withdraw my request, I'm no longer gonna do that. Well, the problem with that is you've already invested time, money, and resources into processing that application and reviewing it, and now there's no fee to help offset that cost. So one of the things that's recommended to you in that schedule is to start initiating some administrative fees that would be paid at the time the application is submitted. Again, because you're trying to protect the taxpayers. I did a little number, I looked at the 2024 fiscal year fees that were collected in permitting and licensing versus the 2025 budget for that department. And your fee collection equated to 6% of that department's budget. So if you assume that department, even at only, if that's even only 25% of its workload, you know, we can certainly look at fees that were covered much more in line with its workload than the 6% that we're currently doing. Um, again, one of the things, you know, one of the things that I heard very early and have heard very often from council is, we want to make sure that things are done right. And we want to make sure that things that get built follow our rules and follow the vision that we have for the city of Blue Ridge. And so, uh, being that our development code is this thick, it requires a number of extra fees, not just planning and zoning, but also architecture, engineering, both civil and structural sometimes, building codes, fire codes, uh, stormwater... stormwater management, soil drainage control, and a number of state licensing. You asked me to bring those consultants to you for your use on an adding basis. And we have. We've been very fortunate, we've not had to use them very often. I think I've only engaged them twice in the last ten or eleven months. But they are there for you in the event that you need them. And if you'll think back to that, some of those earlier, that concept I showed you earlier on the screen, a sixteen-page plan set that we saw, we're going to need some of those expertise to look at that to make sure that they're being built in compliance with state, local laws. We'll call them those folks when we need them. So all of that work that you had asked me for has been completed and delivered. What you currently engaged me to do is work on a couple of ordinances. One is your land clearing and landscaping ordinance. So I've heard a lot from Council that you were concerned about the loss of old growth and natural growth in your tree canopy and your vegetation as development comes into town. You know, you're seeing where lots are just being clearcutted, we're losing all of that. Then we have rain and runoff. And when it's rebuilt, you know, you maybe get one tree that's two inches in caliber to replace it. And that was, that was not the result that Council was looking for. So you asked me to review your, your ordinances to first say, well, is that allowed? And unfortunately, the answer is yes. Under your current regulatory scheme, that's allowed. But it doesn't have to be. And so what I heard, that was your last, I think, two weeks ago, and that was several council members who said, you know, we don't find that to be good for Blue Ridge. What do other communities do to prevent that from happening? And so we talked through what some other communities do to address that challenge. And you all, I think in February, like I said, approved for me to offer you revised ordinance for your later considerations that will ensure that doesn't happen in the future. Okay? So when that's ready, we'll come back, I'll bring it to you, and we'll talk about workshop again. You also engaged me currently to take a look at your sign ordinance. Several members of Council had commented on concern about clutter of signs, the height of signs, the abundance of signs, and a desire to have a more uniform appearance and aesthetic, a more pleasing aesthetic, aesthetic of signs, of commercial signage is concerned. I heard a lot about places that, I think it was Rosemary Beach, that person, I think you said, Chrissy, I think you said, Hilton Head. There were some places that you all really liked where you felt like the signage complemented the scenery, the natural ambiance. And again, going back to what you all have told me time and time again, Blue Ridge is small, Blue Ridge is rural, it's mountainous, it has beautiful views, and your aim is to protect all that. You know, you know that that land is going to develop, you know that growth is going to happen. But you have said to me that you wanted to make sure that there were measures in place that the kind of growth and the volume of growth that was coming was going to complement your vision and meet with your vision, not meet contrary to it. And the sign ordinance is one of the ways we can do that. And so I've had my onsite visit, I reviewed your sign ordinance right now, there are very well-designed standards in it. We talked through what your initiatives are there, and you'll be receiving a draft of that for your discussion in April. One of the other concerns that was brought to me was your water system and the extension of your water system. And how is that decided? Well, if a project comes in and it wants the city water to be extended to it, say right now, there's not a meter, there's not a surface line that goes in front of that piece of property that the developer wants, and even maybe the developer's willing to pay for it, we certainly hope so. But how do we decide whether to grant them yes or no to do that? So I did a little looking, you can't see that, I apologize with the color. But that is a copy of your water service area and your service delivery strategy. So you know that you are currently obligated to provide water services as well outside of your jurisdiction, which means that what could ultimately happen is that a development could come to build just outside of the city limits where you don't govern it, development. You have no zoning control, you have no land development control, you have no ordinance over those pieces of property. But the provision of your water would make something that is exactly contrary to your vision possible. So what measures can you take to deal with that? And that is through a utility extension ordinance that would put those parameters in criteria for consideration in place and require those decisions to come to Council. Right now, there's no process that forces those applications, whether they're inside the city limits or outside of the city limits. There's really nothing that guides the staff or your consultants on when do we extend water lines, when do we not, who pays for it, how's that decided, is that good for the system, is that not good for the system? This would give you a policy and direction on how to make those decisions and ensure that those decisions are made by the Council and not anyone else. So again, that was a tool that, that you all just asked me to brief you on for future consideration. And so we can talk about that at a later date. I was also asked by a couple of council members for some additional tools to consider to, again, help govern growth. We know that private property, we're billed as a company on the principle that private property has rights to develop in accordance with property owners' will. We also know that we have to balance those rights with everyone else's in the community's health, safety, welfare, and general well-being. And that's what zoning does. Right now, your zoning ordinance has very strict zoning districts that require minimum conventional standards for housing and/or commercial uses. And beyond those minimal standards, there's really not another option. And oftentimes, what we see, well, that is the only option that's available for consideration, is those minimal standards and those, you know, we're going to have a lot of this size and setback of that size, a lot of coverage of this percentage. What that can often result in, particularly in our residential areas, is very cookie cutter development. And communities are not embracing, shall we say, a lot of cookie cutter development these days. So what is it and how is it do we provide a tool for the mayor council to govern the quality as well as the quantity of growth, but also give designers, property owners, and developers an opportunity to present something of an elevated design, something that is better than our minimum standards, something that is more than our minimum standards? And that's what we call zoning district, is a floating district, it's called a planned unit development or a green pud. How it's different from an R-two or C-one is very important. Number one, it's what we call floating, we're not going to put that on the map just anywhere. A parcel can only be zone pud if the council says so. Okay? And it has to specifically on a parcel-by-parcel, project-by-project basis be brought before the council. That's really important. Number two, should a parcel come before the council and ask for that zoning, they have to come to you with a complete plan. That plan has to be illustrated on site plans and other types of drawings, but it also has to be written out. Like, think about it as a zoning ordinance that is specific to that use of property. So everything that would be in our zoning ordinance would have to also be in the proposal, zoning for a pud. So lot sizes, density, setbacks, lot coverage percentage, landscaping, buffers, all of those things that we typically deal with would have to be specially spelled out for that particular piece of property and that particular project. If you also were to approve that, then when that project submitted for building permit, which it still has to do, it still has to go through all of our standard review processes, we would be reviewing against what council specifically approved. Okay? So it's, it's a very unique process as opposed to, say, if right now, if we received a building permit for something in the R-three zone, and it came to me, and I took a look at it and said, you know, that is exactly contrary to what the council has told me they want from Blue Ridge, but it meets our minimum standards. I'm obligated to approve that program. Okay? As opposed to if it's a pud, then I don't, I don't approve it. I bring it to you all, and you all have to approve it and ensure that it aligns with your vision and your goals for land use and land development in the city. So that discretionary review process is very different, and very, it's very legal, it's very strict. Okay? It takes a lot of work. Those are not cheap to produce quite peoplingly. They take a lot of effort, a lot of time, and a lot of design on the part of the property owner or applicant or developer who wants to use that. So they're not going to be easily interpreted. They, you can put parameters on them. I've seen them in communities where they said, we will only do this if it's ten acres or more. We say we will, some say there's no acreage minimum or maximum. Some communities say we only want this for residential, some say only for commercials, some say both. Some say, you know, we're, we're not going to entertain anything that does not go above our minimum standards for green space or amenities. Or, this is a tangible example, I had a mayor one time who had a very serious pet peeve in that he did not like pickup trucks to overhang the sidewalk. He wanted everyone to be able to walk, under cover, down the sidewalk. And our standard said driveway had to be twenty-one feet long, while pickup trucks were twenty-five feet long. And so what happened then, pickup truck overhauled the sidewalk, people couldn't walk down the sidewalk, and it infuriated this mayor. So when someone would come to me and say, maybe I want a pud, and your driveway standard is twenty-one feet long, I would say, I'm sorry, it's never going to happen. You better change every driveway to twenty-five feet long, or my mayor won't have it. So, but I couldn't do that in a typical R-three. He just had to be upset that the trucks are going to hang the hot sidewalk. But in a pud, we can, we can require that. So there's some interesting opportunities there. So anyway, that is a tool that you currently do not have in your zoning ordinance that you could consider for including in your zoning ordinance to manage both quantity and quality of growth and future development in the city. This last proposal or area for you to contemplate is an update to your comprehensive land use plan. So again, I don't mean to harp on this, but one of the things I just hear over and over from Council when I speak with you all is your concern for the quality of growth that comes into Blue Ridge and your vision. I hear all the time, we like our small town, we like that it's mountainous, we like to see the views, we want to keep our town the way it is. That's what you guys tell me, and I hear you. The way that we can ensure that happens is twofold. One, we've got to have the zoning ordinances and the development ordinances in place that require that outcome. And those are some of the things that we've been talking about tonight. But the other is we have to make sure that we have the land use policies in place that will defend those ordinances and defend your decisions if ever they are challenged. And the way we do that is to make sure that the comprehensive land use plan clearly and definitively articulates your vision for land use in this community. Currently, I'm concerned that yours does not, and so I have suggested to several of you that you consider an update. Right now, you have a comprehensive land use plan, it's compliant with Florida law. Florida law requires you to have one, it checks certain boxes, it requires you to update it every ten years. Yours does all that. It checks all the boxes, you're compliant with Florida law, it's a combination plan with the county. You can see the boxes on the screen. Those are all the elements that comprehensive plan under Florida law is required to address. Lots of community engagement, lots of stakeholder engagement, lots of community meetings, all of those things are required. We even have to submit photographs and publications in the newspaper and all these sorts of things to demonstrate that we went through those required processes. Ultimately, I'm just a little concerned that your plan is not as adamant in its protection of your vision as your conversations with me are adamant in your protection of the vision for land development and land use in the city. And so your plan update is due in about two years. You don't have to get started before then, but then again, it's a tool that you can consider to do that earlier rather than later if you just wanted to make sure that you were seeing about all of the things that you can't see about. So that's what I have there for you all tonight, but I'll be happy to take any questions from the other councils that you all have.
So you want to have any questions?
I'd like to say thank you for coming up. I've been working with her on the land clearing and signs and green space. That was very important to me, coming in to incidents. And then talking to her, she had mentioned pud, and I think there's been some very misconceptions, which I don't know if it's a good thing or a bad thing for Blue Ridge. When she was telling me about it, how this would be something more the developers probably would not care for because it will put a higher cost restriction on them. But I feel like it would help protect, and when I'm seeing our citizens more, I know that across from Walmart, there are land clearings, all of those trees, and we didn't do anything about it. So I am, I am thankful that she is up here trying to help at least get this straightened out to where, because these developers are going to come regardless if we like it or not, to where if we have things into place that will help protect our charm and our small town and help protect the citizens, I think it's something that we should look into or workshop. It might not be a right fit where then we see, oh, maybe we need to adjust the ordinance here or fix this or whatever it might be. But I appreciate your time coming up here and helping. Because I feel like it just gives us another tool to be able to look at what will be the best fit for Blue Ridge and for the citizens of Blue Ridge.
Yeah, I said the same, I appreciate you, we talked about it, we did things, and then good, good, you know, good things on all of them, on each one of them, we behind on a lot of things, and a lot of things were not up to code. And, you know, I do appreciate it, and I think you explained it very well. Just me and you talking, it's good that everybody heard it. It's like, I mean, a lot of times I say, I can get, you know, and you say a lot. So thank you very much, we really appreciate it.
I think with the water too, like, her explaining it, like, things, so the city's only two by one. So all these bigger, whatever you want to say, development wanting to come in here, they'll have to tap onto our water, where there's things that we can set into place that then will protect us because they won't just be able to do what they, what they want, they'll have to adhere to our standards, which I feel like just makes our small little mountain town more quaint and will help protect it instead of, is that?
Absolutely. Yeah. I mean, right now, there's an argument to be made that you would be required to provide water as long as the developer was willing to pay for the extension, regardless of the impact that they have on your system itself or the quality of development. You know, how many of us have been able to ride down the street and say, this is exactly where the city limits is? You know, we have an area that we think of as our community, you know, this is Blue Ridge, this is, this is wherever you pick your town. And so whether it's inside your jurisdiction or not, a lot of times by perception and by reputation, it's considered to be yours. Right? But if it's right on the other side of that sign, it's right on the other side of that line, it's on the map, and you keep control of permitting and the development and the zoning and the plating, and whether it's cookie cutter or whether it has a fifty-foot sign and hardens blows at night, it's going to be perceived as your community, you know, and it may not come with what you want for your community. And you're going to have made it help happen because you're going to have it in the blood. Right? So this is an opportunity again, this just brings more to the council, more control, more opportunity for the council to ensure that what's coming your way is not what you want to come to your community.
But Dr. Riley, do you have anything?
Well, I just could bear responses to my questions. I know zero about the pud, and it's been about an hour. I know a lot more about this stuff now than I did before. I appreciate your efforts and your encyclopedic power, and your, your understanding of the chair.
Yes, sir. You know, I'm not saying it's the thing, I'm not saying that any of these things are the thing to do. I'm saying these are tools that you all can consider, and I think they're worthy of your time to think through, see if they are the right tool for your toolbox.
And you're giving us the option, I feel like, to put things into place to help protect our, our town and the bill of it so that developers or whoever come in here aren't just going to be able to do whatever they want because in the county, there's no zoning.
Right.
They can do whatever.
That's right. And, and I hate, like, you called and said, oh, my gosh, they just clear cut that piece of property, can they really do that? And you were so upset, and I said, you know, unfortunately, they can, I mean, there's, there's a big upset right now. Land development codes are massive, I'll show you yours, like that, you know, they're hard to understand. And sometimes until you live with them for a little bit, you don't know what the consequences of them are, you know? And so you have to, you have to continuously be coming back to them and making sure that they're delivering what you want.
Well, Mandy, thank you. I think we are running short on time now, we're going to, going to executive sessions and...
Let me say one other thing, when we changed our zoning, a lot like something a hundred years ago, we, me and Chrissy both questioned about our landscape ordinance. And we were told that it was a good, when any tree that was cut, then that definitely had to be planted back. Is that, is it not?
You do have a landscape ordinance, you know, good is a relative term. It's better than some that I've seen. I'm not sure that it delivers on the goals that you all have, because it's not a one-for-one requirement. It's not every three act that I have to plant one back. It's not that, you know? So it's, and you know, I think you probably look a little more buffering than you have. So good's relative, that might work great, but not...
Yeah, I think ours has, you know, you have to incorporate so much green space and all that as well. But it has some, it's, it's not completely avoided.
No, not at all.
So it's, but it could be strengthened more than what you, what you're thinking since. So we'll work on that and we look forward to a workshop and thank you for all your effort. We appreciate it. And so at this time, we're going to go, we'll have public hearings, or public comments, not a public hearing. And I believe we have one person, Elaine Lambert.
Uh, I'm John, I'm Elaine.
Okay, I was about to say, did I say that?
No, I'm definitely John. Elaine is kind enough to get me on the agenda of getting this right place at the right time.
Okay, and you will have three minutes.
Yes, I'll speak as fast as humanly possible. Uh, well, thank, thank you for your time. My name is John Allen, I'm the owner of Brown Haven Homes. And I wanted to talk this evening about possible developments, uh, here in the city. I am currently working with Danny and Damon Davenport on the old Davenport lumber yard. And we have a very, very thoughtful design. And as I was sitting here listening to the meeting this evening and reading the bottom of the, of the agenda, it says, our mission is to enrich the quality of life in Blue Ridge for all of our citizens. And I think that's wonderful. The words, local as it gets to the mountains, we're very thoughtful about protecting our mountains and protecting our small town, uh, vibe and just the feel of what it is to be the, the rural North Georgia area. A couple of weeks ago, we had a meeting with Ms. Cody and the team here in Blue Ridge and presented a very thoughtful design. And it was very, very close to the, to complying with the ordinances. And to Ms. Cody's point, they're, they're quite comprehensive, they're very, very detailed and some things would conflict with other things. And really, my point this evening is to, uh, just bring awareness that, uh, that it's, thoughtful development is, is, is at the heart of what we're wanting to do and we appreciate any considerations. And if I had ninety seconds and I don't know if this can plug into that and show just a quick video, I'd love to just give you an idea of, of what thoughtful development and thoughtful planning.
If you can make it work.
Okay, yeah, you're great. I'm going to have to walk over there and this will plug in. We'll, we'll see how this, how this goes. It's a lot of people to be doing this, um... So, uh, maybe it was, maybe it's my plug the other one? Oh, yeah, there we go. Ta-da. All right, so this is just a quick overview of a, a presentation that we gave to Ms. Cody and the team in, uh, uh, in Blue Ridge a couple of weeks ago, so stand by. And, and the intent here is it's a, a part feel, it's very much in compliance with what I thought I heard the council saying about, uh, trees, landscaping, it's like living in an apartment. All right, let me get the, let me get the, the intent across. But as, as the plans or as the ordinance agreed, we were very, very close, close to complying as they're written. What's interesting about the ordinance though, and I don't want to mispeak, but these are all detached family homes and it takes a lot of intentionality to plan something like this. What's interesting is they would actually allow for other type of attached product, which is actually more dense than what we just proposed as it's written. And to the, to the spirit of the, to the city, that's not our intention. We're a single-family home builder. We don't want that. But it's mainly in awareness speech this afternoon or this evening is what I wanted to do.
So you're saying our ordinance allows it to be more dense?
Attached.
Attached?
If you were to do an attached townhome type product, which is, yes, ma'am. Yeah, something along those lines. And again, that's not an upside. I don't know that that white goes along with it. And I don't want to mispeak, Ms. Cody.
I was, the way I put it into the place to be is our ordinance currently allow for a carpet complex, but not a building of that nature.
Thank you all for your time.
Oh, thank you. Okay, is there anyone else who wants to speak or double comments? Okay, I have two people. I think you're back. Oh, thank you so much.
Two things, my, uh, my, the fire truck. I hope you remember three years ago, we sold out, made a presentation about the fire truck. One of the things that we looked at when I was on the council was buying a fire truck over a period of ten years. Still spending the money and all of the, the public budget. Number two, we looked at hiring two full-time firemen that would employ for the city that would take care of all the fire crews in the city and they would be the operator of the truck. And I want y'all to think about that when you go into executive session and workshop. Second thing, I understand a council member resigned two weeks ago and rescinded his resignation. I don't think that council member should be paid for this two weeks. Thank you.
Would anyone else like to speak?
My name's Justin. I thought the lady did a red eye job. Sorry, I didn't know your name. Kind of sounds like she might should help us do our solid waste ordinance. And she's literally doing every other ordinance that we have, you know? Kind of seems like maybe she's the one that should, you know, she seems pretty thorough. But I seen a couple of things on that. I noticed before the session, I just want y'all to think about. If you, if you remove the limit on the haulers, you know, trash business is not a super profitable business. Margins are pretty tight, you know, eighteen, twenty percent. So when you guys take a thousand dollars a year and then you take twelve percent of our gross, well, that only leaves us with a tight margin. So either we got to have volume or, you know, it's not profitable. Or that means we're going to slack on service. So the citizens are going to get crappy service because we're not really worried about them as much. They're low price service, you know, we're going to go do better service for people to pay later. That's just business, you know? You could lower the thousand dollars a year permit, lower the twelve percent. I don't know, it's just ideas to think of because there's problems that I think for us, you expect us to give a great product, but you're beating our money down. So it's kind of going to be hard to do. On the one and a half ton truck thing, you didn't really specify that. So like, is that payload? Is that just a slang term? Is a one and a half ton payload truck, that's three thousand pounds. Most people that drive a real pickup in here, their truck will haul three thousand pounds. So you're going to push us down to pick up a trash pickup truck, which again is not cost effective, not B O T compliant, you know, it's a lot of problems with that. So also on your residential thing, you didn't specify about multifamily. So, you know, I'd like to have multifamily. It'd be good for business. But I'm not sure the property owners would like to have us, you know, middle springs. You know, that would be a lot of individual trash cans versus a dumpster. You know, I didn't really know that specified, you know, residential to one extent. And then lastly, even what this nice lady did here, that's all great. Sounds like she's getting us took care of, but how are we going to enforce it? I mean, we haven't enforced anything in the last year. That's why I've been here for a year trying to get a permit. So like this ordinance, if we change it, there's no enforcement, then, I mean, what's the difference in next week or today, you know? Even all this she's putting in, if there's no way to enforce it, then why are we wasting our time? And it seems like we got to add that into what you're doing or it's not going to be effective. But anyway, look forward to the meeting on the thirty first.
Good points, Justin. Do you want to help write the ordinance? You have a lot of knowledge.
She's probably lots more.
Oh, my goodness. Okay, would anyone else like to speak? Okay, I believe we do need to go into executive session to have a motion.
I'll move when we go to executive session.
Okay, do you have a second?
Second.
I'll, if they will raise your hand and say aye.
Just three minutes to somewhere, awareness that the codes don't allow them.
Y'all know everybody.
You know, I've paid you. I think I delivered some orders.
No, I'm a, I'm a vendor.